Stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If that's what it means, we could meet standing for a moment. Last week on September 6th, we lost a very dear member of our community. And I just want to take a moment to have a moment of silence for Nolan Carlson. Nolan lost his battle with the outstanding health issue last week. And I know it's a difficult start to this whole year for many people in our community who know him. And I just want to have a moment to keep, to honor Nolan's life, keep his family, his friends, his parents, and his loved ones in our hearts. Did you get any requests or comment? So I'd like to ask for a motion to seal the executive session. Motion made by Marjorie McBride, seconded by Brian Bradshaw.
Madam Chair, let's make it as part of the record that you recused yourself from an executive session.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the August 26, 2019 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Moving on to new business, tonight we're going to talk about the new law around fundraising for field trips in the state. I think our legal counsel, Mary Ann Carroll, can begin by telling us what the law says. And then Dr. Bryce will speak about the different things the district is doing to try to deal with this new law.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, let me start out by saying it is an interpretation of the law that led us to the situation that we're in regarding field trips. In April of 2019, the then Commissioner of Education, Commissioner Wagner, issued a decision that parents could no longer be asked to pay for field trips. As part of the decision, he cited the law, which I will give you, give you a cite in a minute, but he basically said that field trips could be part of fundraising, or the district could totally pay for field trips, but we could no longer ask parents to in any way pay for field trips. That meant no payment for close-up, that meant no payment for band trips, that meant no payment for chorus, for trips to Washington, for Nature's Classroom. We could no longer ask parents to pay for anything, individual field trips, elementary children went on, no band trips. Now, what he was citing was the statute, which basically said, and I have it. The statute that he was referring to was Section 1638-6A of Rhode Island General Laws, which says, "No public school official or public school employee shall, for any purpose, solicit or exact from any pupil in any public school any contribution or gift of money or any article of value or any pledge to contribute any money or article of value." Basically, he was saying that that statute, which has been in the law for many years, meant that parents could not pay, be asked to pay for field trips. As a result of that coming out in April, it has put a difficult situation in place for school districts who in the past had asked parents to make a donation toward their children's field trips. Now, the Commissioner, in giving that opinion, felt that he was preventing, he was, he was preventing children who didn't have the means to go on field trips from being excluded from field trips. I think what he didn't realize is that every school district in the state has always made accommodations and has always been able to subsidize children for some financial reason couldn't go with the means to go. Unfortunately, what his opinion did was put an undue burden on districts regarding field trips. So now, every field trip is coming up with a plan as to how we are going to try to fund field trips, or if we're going to have field trips at all. I know of some districts who have actually canceled all of their overnight field trips for the year because there are no money, there's no time to raise the money for these field trips to take place. As a result of some requests from many of the school districts in the state and school committees, what I did do is I actually sent an email, I contacted and sent an email to Senator Hannah Gallo. Senator Gallo is the chairman of Senate H E W. And I asked her if she would introduce an amendment to change the statute so that we could accept contributions from parents. I believe that when the General Assembly meets, and that won't be until January, if the senators and reps add a sentence to that law that simply says, "This does not apply to school-sponsored field trips in which parents can be asked for funding as long as the district provides funding to any student whose family can't afford the cost of the trip." If that sentence was added to Rhode Island General Law, then we could continue to have the field trips in the manner which we had in the past. School districts around the state are coming up with policies and procedures to deal with the field trip issue. And I know right now, Dr. Bryce would like to explain what his recommendation is for the Bristol Warren Regional School District, and what Bristol Warren is now doing to try to assist schools with the ongoing field trips. Dr. Bryce?
Thank you, Counselor. So, a couple of things. This has been a topic that really started to be discussed with me when I got here and at the end of July. We talked about it, several individuals mentioned the issue in early August as well. And so we decided that we were going to schedule a meeting. And at that meeting, I wanted parents, I wanted PTO presidents and other leaders in the, in the community to come to that meeting where we explained to them exactly what the opinion meant. And if you see the cover memo that I wrote to the school committee, the three ideas or three parts of the opinion are just that the district can budget funds and pay for field trips, that as long as it's part of the instructional program, that fundraising for trips is permissible as long as students don't have individual targets. And then finally, that you can continue to have extra or external, externally sponsored trips, like the World Language Trip, where a group of students and some sponsors go to another country for a period of time to experience the language and culture. So those things are still permissible under the opinion. The problem is that districts that Mary Ann Carroll, our counselor, our legal counsel mentioned, funding is an issue. So based on that meeting, we actually came up with a consensus. Everyone wasn't in complete agreement with everything, but the consent, overall consensus was this, that the Bristol Warren Regional School District will only pay for field trips if funding is permissible, right? Part of the issue is, we know that we've had significant budget cuts in this past year, and so in most cases, no funding would exist for many of these trips, all right? And so that is clearly a concern and not the intention, that we know that the Commissioner of Education, former Commissioner, had, but it is the unintended consequence. Many of the PTO leaders that were there expressed that they had a budget for field trips and that they would be able to continue some of the, the field trips, the local field trips that were part of the instructional program that they had already participated in. We then got into a discussion of creating potentially a new 501(c)(3) organization specifically to collect funding for a really big trip that has a historical significance and importance in our community, Nature's Classroom. The anticipated cost of Nature's Classroom is about $90,000. And previously, students and parents had been asked to fund part of that. The cost was about $325. And so we checked today with, with our, our team over at KMS, and they were able to share that at this time, about 95 students have provided, or families have made a deposit for that trip out of roughly 243 students enrolled. So we're, we're less than 50% of the seventh grade student population that has made a deposit, right? So it's probably around 40% of the student population. That deposit was supposed to be initially made on May the 1st of this, earlier this year. A second $100 payment was supposed to be made on June the 3rd. A payment of $100 is supposed to be made this Wednesday on September the 11th, with a final payment on October the 10th of $50. And so it's critically important, this is why we had that meeting at the end of August, this is why I had a conversation with our chairperson, and we put it on the agenda just so that we could talk through this today, so that we can get a letter to our families by tomorrow close of business. The next thing that we, we talked about was that privately sponsored trips are still permissible, and students can be asked to pay and/or fundraise for these trips. And then finally, the, the other large trip that we know our district participates in is that our high school, the band along with the music department sponsors a really large trip typically every four years, where they, the last time they sponsored that trip, they went to Florida. I was like, well, how many buses did we take? And they were like, sorry, we flew, right? The cost of that trip was approximately $260,000, which they fundraised for as well as parent, as well as students were, were given targets, I guess, in order to come up with that. And so in the conversation, what we talked about was that they would delay for the 2019, 2020 school year, having a really large trip. So a large trip would be either to DC, to New York, to Florida, something like that. They were trying to stay local, and while what they would do for this year is that they would fundraise, and so that they would, I called it a war chest, right? And so what they're really trying to accumulate are sizable amount of funds that they would raise, that they could then forward fund their trip for next year, and then every year, so that as a cycle, they're fundraising to backfill the kitty, or the war chest, as they would symbol, that will allow them to know that they are already going to be in good shape for the upcoming year, while in this current year, they're actually working to replenish their, their kitty. And so these are some of the ideas that we came up with. It would be my recommendation that after discussion, that we would be able to put out a letter to our community, letting them know what the, the opinion has said and what we are going to do as a district in order to try to, to keep these very important and worthwhile instructional related field trips as a part of our curriculum for our young people.
Thank you, Dr. Bryce. Any questions?
Thank you for that presentation. People may or may not know that we have student activity funds, and those are typically funds that are raised by students for students. So if they want to do an end-of-the-year banquet, then they would raise money, and it would go to their, to their student activity account. Raquel, Ms. Bellinger, could you discuss how those can be used, if they can be used for something like this, and, and, or Dr. Bryce? Because typically, I was under the assumption that whatever funds might be in a student activity account had to be expended by the end of that school year unless they were making a donation to something else. So, so if, if the, because I kind of feel bad, right? I feel bad for those seniors that might be in the band or in the chorus that were expected maybe to go somewhere this year, and they've been doing stuff for three years, and it's like, oh, no, no, we're not going to do that. You're going to continue to raise money so that the folks next year can go do something. So how does all, how do student activity funds and those types of things and the restrictions around that play into this? And were you, do we think that we're going to move forward with a 501(c)(3)?
501(c)(3).
501(c)(3).
Yeah, exactly. So let me take the first part, and then I'm going to turn it over to Raquel. So let me clarify something. So the Band Parents Association, I think is the name, they talked about having a four-year cycle of trips. So current seniors have had the opportunity to go on a number of trips. They're not, just not taking a really large trip this year as they assemble, as they fundraise and assemble kitty to be able to have enough money to forward fund for next year, and then the next year's group will start to work with that, filling that. The other thing that I would mention, just at, at a high level for student activity funds, is this issue of students can still fundraise for any number of purposes. What they can't do is be given targets for how much they can raise. And then the question is whether or not they raise enough that would be allowed, that would be able to, to fund a program. So it is a difference than what we, I think, most schools here around our East City. Raquel?
So, the second part of the question would be non-acumulated balance at year-end. So I have the policy here, and one of the paragraphs of the student activity policy is, and this is what the Bristol Warren's policy, it's not the intent of a student activity to accumulate significant sums for future years, money raised in specific academic years should be spent in that same year, except for otherwise noted in the administrative rules of the policy. That being said, we do know we've been digging deep in subcommittee to other funds, including student activity. There are some groups, Band Name one of them, that has a significant balance at year-end. At no point are we going to touch that on your ticket for any of the use, but specifically for the band. But I think what we will be asking them to do is document their intentions and bring that forward to subcommittee, then to full committee, so everyone's aware of the balance and what they intend on using it for.
I would, I would expect that for those in the audience on the 16th, when we have our subcommittee meeting, you will see student activity funds as a, as a topic for discussion so that we can dig a little into that. So we'll be ready for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions, Ms. Bellinger? So I know in the meeting, the KMS actually, PTO wasn't represented because they're in the middle of a transition phase. However, we think we found people that will take over for slightly, not mentioning anybody's name. So we had discussions with the members that are there and the members that we're trying to get on to move the Nature's Classroom from underneath the Bristol Warren District into the KMS PTO. And we're going to set up the 501(c)(3) and do it all like so it's a nonprofit. With that said, we are under the gun against no matter what. So with only 40% that paid, and now we have to ask them that they can either take their money back or donate it, will obviously create a problem and a short haul with the Nature's Classroom as it is. So our question is, can we move it to the springtime so these kids don't lose out? And how the parents, within the parents' organization, kind of get in a momentum and get out in the community to raise such a large amount? I think that's kind of the biggest overall question.
So I, I think that's a good idea. I don't know about whether or not the venue has availability, right? And so I would make the assumption that they are pretty booked.
Right.
Right, throughout the year. And so I know that we made a deposit of about $6,700 in May, I believe. And so the question is whether or not we could find another suitable window where our students could participate that would be later in the year, right?
Right.
Back into the, into the spring. The other issue that we would also suggest, even though it looks like that particular event would no longer be a school sponsor, but be a PTO sponsor, activity would be the efficacy of changing flow, leaving on Monday, returning on a Friday, to leaving on a Wednesday after school and returning on Saturday or Sunday. And in that way, they, you know, you might get the same amount of days, but the impact on lost instructional time for the other subjects might also be lessened.
And I know that in the, in the actual law, it says, or the general law says, that teachers have to use sick time.
Exactly.
Their time, personal time. So I think that's also, you know, worrisome for parents that know that these teachers give everything and really shouldn't be taking their personal time. So I don't know if it would make sense to have the KMS PTO, Raquel, yourself, maybe Mary Ann, kind of meet before to fit in, and the seven, Tammy and the seventh grade teachers that are putting this together, because I, we don't want to not have this.
That's right. So, so I, I do think that you think, Mary Ann, you look like you wanted to weigh in.
I, I want to weigh in on, on teachers volunteering and putting in their time. As long as students don't pay, and as long as it is fundraised or subsidized and paid for by the school district, if you have a combination of that, part of the subsidy that the school district can pay is by allowing the teachers to, to go without taking sick time or pay without.
Like an in-kind contribution?
Right. The, the only instance when teachers absolutely can't be paid is if it's a total, it's one of those trips that's sponsored by an outside organization, and I don't mean PTO, I mean by some outside, where the kids are being asked to pay a certain amount. It's in those instances that you, that teachers can't go on their own time, and they would have to take sick days or personal days or pay with, or days without paying. But if it's a partial donation and district paying, then again, part of the district paying can be to pay for those teachers to go.
Thank you so much. The other, I'm sorry, one more question. The other issue that kind of I'm seeing is how many other programs are there out there that we don't know kind of their schedule, we don't know who's coming up? And I, my, the reason why I'm saying is because we can use kind of the Nature's Classroom as a process and figure it out, but are we missing other, other opportunities that our kids are going on that we're not doing the right thing and kids may be missing out? And I just want to make sure that we know, like robotics, when that date is, like everything that's scheduled within each separate groups. And certainly middle school and ele, and high school, the elementaries are taken care of for those PTOs, they don't pay anything.
Yes, I think Dr. Bryce has.
Yes, so just a response to that. So I can tell you that the robotics team has made, like, I think it's, I think it's DECA, right, has talked about not just regionals, but if they get past regionals, maybe going to nationals, down at Nashville has, has a concern. Many of the elementary PTOs have just mentioned that they, they have a calendar of field trips, usually one field trip per grade level that the PTO is underwriting.
Yes.
And so we feel like that those are covered. I think the, the impetus for the conversation was really what we were going to do with band, the band trip, and Nature's Classroom is sort of the, band is actually, I think, in a good place just because the Band Parents Association raises so much money and is fairly confident, based on their conversation at the meeting on August 29th, that they're going to be in good shape to raise enough money to be able to make the, make the trip private, and they can still do a combination of fundraising as well as asking students to participate. I do think, Mary Ann, to your comment, we're going to have to try to figure out how we get around, how, how we, how we structure it in a way so that staff are able to attend, because this, that's a pretty labor-intensive trip.
You're talking about the band now?
Yeah, the band.
Yeah. Now, our only hope is that when the General Assembly meets in January, there are enough senators and reps that sponsor the bill and change the statute. If the statute is amended, then we're back to the way it was. What I might want to suggest to the school committee, I know of at least one other school committee tomorrow night is passing a resolution to send to the senators and reps, asking them to amend the statute so that parents can contribute to field trips going forward. I'm sure that if enough school committees got behind that, maybe we could move it quickly. As I said, I know that, I've spoken to at least two reps and two senators, and they are well aware of the issues that have occurred. And maybe if school committees actually took a formal vote to send a resolution, that, that would help. Again, the General Assembly works at a snail's pace, and I don't say that derogatory, because I'm in the General Assembly, so I'm not criticizing, but I just know that sometimes it takes a long time. But there are certain senators and reps that now know that this is really caused a problem. So if we can get, you know, committees and parents and everybody behind this, maybe we could ask them to move quickly, and maybe by the end of next, of this year, we'll have the amendment so that we don't need to worry about the band trip or Nature's Classroom in years to come. That's my hope. That's the only solution right now is to amend the statute.
Mrs. McBride?
Well, I'm just going to say, when we talk, when you talk about the August 29th, just of it was that if you're going to go on a trip and the trip's going to cost $5,000, you have to have the $5,000 in your hands before you plan the trip, because you cannot count on raising the money and then going on a trip. Am I making it clear what?
That is correct.
Committee to us. So there are a few instances when we get in trouble, and that's when they win something. If robotics wins the regional championship and they get to go to the national championship, that's not something that they know about until it happens. So we have to take a look at how we budget forward so that we have enough money for that group to go. Then if parents want to donate, or say if I wanted to donate to that fund, I could do that. The same happens with DECA, and I'm sure there are a couple of others. There's a, some art, poetry, music things that go on that you don't know if you're going to win to the last minute. And so all of this really is about taking a pause and making sure that we're covered. So we don't have to say, in April, you're going to Nature's Classroom, and then we have to say in October, no, you're not. We have the money in April, right?
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Adam?
Adam?
I was trying to wrap my head around the problem that created by the interpretation. And I'm just, I suppose, curious, is it, is it almost a matter of semantics?
So again, I, let's make everybody aware of what the basis for this was. Several years ago, a school department in Northern Rhode Island was charging students for summer school. And that particular matter went to the Rhode Island Department of Education. And the Rhode Island Department of Education cited the statute as being the reason why we could not charge for summer school. It was only a matter of time before somebody was going to ask for an opinion based on field trips. And again, that happened last early spring when the East Greenwich School Committee asked for an opinion because they had sponsored a trip to Washington DC that was costing their children like fourteen hundred dollars. And one of the members of the school committee thought that that was too expensive and asked their attorney to ask for an opinion. Again, it's very clear that you can't ask parents, you can't charge parents. So the commissioner has given an opinion and under law, the commissioner has a right to interpret statute regarding education. And right now, that interpretation, Adam, stands. The new commissioner has come on board. She has stated that she may look at it differently, but she's also said she doesn't want any child to not go on a trip because they can't afford it. So is it interpretation? Certainly, but it's the interpretation of the commissioner.
My question's actually a little bit different. So if, if we raise, if we pay for field trips in exactly the same way that we always have, but instead of calling something a required fee, we called it a donation to the cost of the field trip, does that solve the problem?
Not if you ask, tell parents they have to donate a hundred dollars or they have to donate eighty dollars or.
So that we take away the threshold of, the individual threshold for, for being able to participate? But does that limitation on targets include an overall target for the entirety of fundraising to pay for the field trip? But we said we needed to raise collectively as a, as a school, ninety thousand dollars to do nature's classroom, or else if we don't do it. And then we funded it in the way that we always have.
You funded in a way where?
Suggested that, you know?
I don't, I think that would not be in compliance with the opinion. On the other hand, if you say, we can't go on nature's classroom unless we raise ninety thousand, you have a meeting of the parents and you say, we're going to have a fundraiser, can you come and donate money? And everybody, we don't say it, but they all think that they have to donate three hundred dollars. And they do, well, that's, you've had a fundraiser and they've each donated three hundred dollars. But you can't say it, you can't identify it, and you can't be specific.
And we can say like, the cost of this program is such and such dollars per student and we need to raise ninety thousand dollars.
Right. And that's what your fundraiser would be.
So let me just weigh in.
But you've got to be very careful because I am telling you that the ACLU is watching this extremely carefully. As soon as the decision came out, they applauded it and they are watching to see what every school district is doing. And before long, I'm sure there's going to be an apper request from the ACLU asking for what field trips took place in your district and how they were funded.
So, and I, I just think the other issue is, so if, if we actually are charging students three hundred and twenty-five dollars or parents, right? So that raises, if, if two hundred students pay that fee, parents pay that fee, so that's sixty-five thousand dollars, right? So we know that BWIF provided some nominal funding, I think about ten thousand. We're at seventy-five thousand, right? And I don't know how we closed the gap, but we probably, you know, Raquel probably finds the money and we're there, right? Right?
Thanks.
Right?
John, so easy.
So I, I'm, part of the issue for us has to be, number one, so this is a, this is a, a field trip. I had a parent that said their children were on their way to college and there were three, I guess, freshmen in the car and they were having that conversation about the seventh grade field trip, right? So it really is a seminal event. So we don't want that to, to, we don't want to lose that. But at the same time, I do think this idea that maybe we would meet and there would be some consideration of changing the time. So instead of doing it in the fall, we do it in, you know, late winter, early spring. We maybe change the number of days and, and, and instead of doing it Monday through Friday, maybe sometime during the weekend, the weekend. All of those things could open up opportunities for us to rethink how we do it. But lastly, I do think we're just going to have to try to, as long as this rule, this opinion is in effect, we're going to have to try to fundraise our way out of it. And we can't give them targets. And the downside is because we can't give people targets, we just don't know what we're going to get.
Is the issue with targets that it can't be, is it, the way I, maybe I'm just making it wrong. But, but isn't it that you can't have a target that is a requirement for participation, right? So you could give, you could say what a target is, but if they don't meet the target, you can't say you can't go.
If you don't meet the target, you, you, right? So we, we could say, for example, we need, you know, collectively, we could say to the seventh grade, to the, all the seventh grade parents, all two hundred and forty-three, I think, right? That we need to raise twenty thousand dollars. And we just send that out in a letter to everyone, please donate whatever you can. And if we raise fifteen thousand dollars, right? If, if any student that wants to participate, whether they, their family has contributed or not, would be allowed to participate. The, the, the problem with that is that we actually haven't fully funded the cost of the field trip.
Tammy, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, to turn to Kat's point specifically about saying how much, we can't say how much the field trip costs individually. So we already put that out there in the universe last year as the cost of three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And we've already established a threshold per student. So if we change our course now, how do we legally then say, okay, now you don't really have a threshold and it's just whatever you pay? Is that permissible?
All right. So what you did last year is you put it out to every parent that they had to pay three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And they could either pay it in one lump sum or they could pay it in a payment plan with a, a payment being due on Wednesday. You can no longer tell parents they have to pay. If the field trip is going to run, whether a parent makes a donation or not, child, every child that's eligible to go has to go. So you can't say everybody has to pay three hundred and twenty-five dollars. You can't say every parent has to raise three hundred and twenty-five dollars. What you have to say is collectively, we need to raise twenty thousand dollars. So parents, let's come up with fundraisers so we can come up with twenty thousand dollars. And that's how you now have to address it.
I understand. So, but we've already put that out.
And, and I'm.
So how do you, how do you like rescind?
Okay, so what, what I have.
Because to your point, you want to make sure that.
So what I have recommended, what I have, my opinion is that any parent who has already paid or any parent who has already made contributions has to have the opportunity to have that money refunded while we fundraise.
So just the opportunity to have it refunded?
I would send a letter out to every parent who has already paid saying we can no longer ask parents to pay. We are now...
Mary Ann, no, I'm just clarifying that I think that's the letter Dr. Bryce was talking about, that he will be sending out to the community, just so that we know where that's going from.
And for the record, that's Tammy Borges, Kathy, just so you know.
It would actually be two letters. I think there's a general letter that goes to everybody in the district. And there is a special letter that goes to seventh grade parents at KMS because that's where the nature's classroom field trip is. And so this idea that a group of us would meet, we probably need to meet as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
So that we can, yeah, so I mean, okay. So if we can schedule it tomorrow, I don't know what my calendar looks like, hold on.
I'm just saying, I think it needs to be to speak.
Well, oh, absolutely, absolutely.
We're less than two months out.
So, well, we're less than two months out if we keep it at the same thing, at the same time. I do think that, you know what? We could probably, it might be somewhere between one-thirty, do we finish cap duty? Like one-thirty, I mean, twelve-thirty? Sometime between twelve-thirty and two-thirty, we could meet. All right?
I have, can I ask a question?
Yes, please, if you could just say your name.
So my name, my name can be sent by some, it's in sixth grade at KMS, so they'll be going to nature's classroom.
Next year, all right.
Looking forward to it.
So you're in the sweet spot.
Because we've had fourteen cousins go, so we're looking forward to it.
Want to keep the streak alive?
So my question to you is if one parent can't, if one child can't afford it, because they're all going, there's ninety, there's two hundred and six, two hundred and fifty kids in the seventh grade this year?
Roughly, yep.
If only ninety can sign up, but this law changed, so everybody gets to go. Are you going to cancel it if you don't get the money? If that's what it's going to be? So if you can't raise the money, it's a no-go.
I think that was my point, Amy, when I said you have to have the money raised in advance.
Yeah, so there's a lot that's not considered because it is, it's a big problem, it's a big problem with athletics because they go on, they're on tournaments or they go, so my, that's my question. Should sixth grade stop fundraising now to go next year?
I would think that it is in line with what the BAN parents are now doing, right? Which is they're going to take a, they're going to take sort of a sabbatical year and not go do a big trip and actually spend the year fundraising so that they have those funds in, in an account and they're able to say, you know what? We know that we've got a hundred thousand dollars for next year's field trip. And so that means we only need to raise another fifty as opposed to walking into the year and having to raise a full one hundred and fifty. So yeah, I would say that would be something that we'll talk about tomorrow. But the idea that the sixth grade at KMS starts fundraising in advance for the, for nature's classroom for next year, it is in line with what the BAN parents are doing, is in line with what this 501(c)(3) or 501(c)(3) would do.
Thank you. I know Mr. Bradshaw and then Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I'm a parent of a seventh grader and I've been looking forward to my seventh grader going on this trip. When this letter goes out and we offer the parents the opportunity because we now need to fundraise to take the monies that they've paid back, can we put in that same letter the, the group target and what has been donated? If those donations stand, what, what our balance would be?
You can put, and, and again, when we had this conversation, you need to offer them the opportunity to have the money back. Because you ask them to pay. I would then put a paragraph in that letter saying, however, for this trip to take place, we need to raise twenty thousand dollars.
Additional dollars, yep.
Right. Would you, is, is there any amount of money you would donate toward this trip? And then if they turn around and say, just keep my three hundred and twenty-five dollars, you're fine.
Do we have, do we have a, a go-no-go date that, that we would have to have that money buy in order to say the trip is still on?
So the initial conversation that we've had with Dr. Burns and Tammy and the rest of the folks at KMS earlier today, we're still trying to get some details. But as I mentioned, and it's right on the website, that last, the next payment of, I guess, for those ninety-five students or families that have signed up is this Wednesday, right? And then the final payment is on October the 10th. So I make the assumption that the, the go-no-go date is somewhere around early October because you need to lock in that final payment, right? And so that's kind of where we are. It's probably not the 10th, it's probably the 12th for us, right? You give a couple of days. And so that is if we keep the date. I think the first thing that we're going to try to do tomorrow is meet, have the conversation, have someone at the school, get on the horn to the, the venue and find out, do they have other open dates? And then let's see, because, because right now, we just need time, right? Time is not our, our friend in this case because we cannot directly ask parents to donate. The other problem that we're going to have is that we've got two hundred and forty-three seventh graders, but only ninety-five have signed up. So could we run the trip with ninety-five? Yes, but I would be concerned about what would happen for the other one hundred roughly and, and fifty kiddos that haven't signed up and whether or not we are opening ourselves up to people making the argument that we intentionally did not open up the trip to all students, even students that may not have, may not have the, the where we're going, whose parents may not have the where we're going to pay.
One, one quick follow-up. If we, we can't provide target, monetary targets.
Right, you can't say to the parents, we each have to raise five hundred dollars.
But can you say, we have to raise, can you provide a deadline? We have to raise nine, ninety thousand dollars by October 15th?
Yes.
So, so we can put, we can put deadlines on it, we can't put monetary targets.
But to go with what John DeRoyce said, if you have a hundred and fifty students that have not signed up, we need to make sure that some, if not all of those a hundred and fifty haven't signed up because they can't afford it. That's, that's the issue. I think that's your biggest issue right now, is why are those students not showing up?
So last year, so when we started having these conversations, we found out that last year, I want to say fifty, seventy kids didn't go. And I was like, whoa, why didn't seventy kids attend? And so there were people that said, well, you know what? My child didn't attend because, right? They, they didn't want to spend a week in a cabin in nature. It's just not their thing. Okay, it might not be that thing, their thing for that particular student, but we just want to make sure that we are not excluding students based only on their family's ability to pay.
Mr. Cabral, did you have something?
Yeah, um, I, I, let's go small for a change. What, what is the cost for a bus, Raquel, to go to Providence, the state of the class? And how many people could it cost? How much?
Two hundred and ninety dollars, sorry.
That's, that's a round trip trip and it takes kids to wherever you're going?
Yeah.
Now, a, a parent, let's say a parent paid forward and said, I'll pay the food tonight. And they always say, whatever, wait a minute. You can just take the money and the kids can go, correct? No problem at all?
Correct.
And the other issue is, I'm sorry, I, I, I don't care how many kids you're talking, there are going to be some kids in there whose parents are just embarrassed to say, you know, I, my kids, my kids don't like, he doesn't like the woods or whatever it is. The truth of the matter is, I just can't afford it, that's all. I mean, and, you know, how we get to the bottom of that, I don't know, but it's just not fair. It's still not fair to me.
The only way I think you get to the bottom of it is the way, is by what I said, which is you have to have all of the money upfront. And then if somebody decides to opt out, that's their decision to make. So you have to raise the eighty thousand and then, or ninety thousand or whatever it is, and then you allow the students to opt in or opt out.
Right, because that's not.
And that's why you have to take the thoughtful pause because how do you, I, I don't.
You're in a tight crunch here, Mark.
Well, if I had eighty thousand dollars, I'd give you.
So.
But that is the point. I, I will say that I agree with Mrs. McBride on that because the whole idea of why this law is the law is so that every child has the opportunity to go on these trips. So if you have that lump sum of money, everybody has the opportunity and no one can, you know, is not going to necessarily participate even though they might not say so because their families can't afford to pay. I mean, it is a big, when that paper comes home, I got it. It's a lot. I mean, that's a lot you have to consider for, for most people, I would say, in a public school district. So I just, I think, I think the idea of, of, of having a, a fundraising and creating these workshops, I would love to get this done this year too. I'm with you, Amy, one hundred percent, and we're going to. percent, and we're gonna try, is what I think we're all saying here, and what you're saying. But, but moving forward, we really do have to do that fundraising, so that that money's there, so that, that piece is taken out of the puzzle.
I understand that, I just know that, because this is two months away, it's our biggest problem right now, the whole field trip, and then we'll get it, we have. And I'm so hopeful that when the letter goes home to parents saying, we are not going to take this field trip unless we raise the money, and you are welcome to donate what you pay. I already wrote my check for three hundred and twenty-five dollars. So you are keeping that check. And I will write more if I have to, so that everybody can go. And I think that people will donate that money, I think, right now, no one is aware, and that's why I obviously put it in the book tomorrow, but I, I believe the parents that their kids wanna go, and parents that, and give extra, we'll give extra, and then the rest, once we know what that amount is, it'll be something, forty thousand, whatever it is, um, you know, we're gonna work hard to raise that money, wait all year.
That's what we need to do. Yeah, great. Um, Mr. Tidester, did you have a question still?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm trying to sort of, the, I suppose it could be WBA, the parent, the eight grades student that went last year, and cried all the way home because he wanted to go back. Um, I think the, and also, people know that I, I tweet these meetings, and I'm getting some responses from people, which were like, hey, wait a second, this is still happening. It sounds like it's a little bit questionable, unfortunately. Um, and it sounds like, right, um, basically, the money needs to be in place for potentially the entire seventh grade to go, in order for it to be go, am I correct?
Correct.
Correct. Not just the kids.
And the other question I have then is, um, this meeting to talk about money, is this something that is, that might not tomorrow? Is this something that, that is open to parents who are concerned about this, or is this something I should not publicize?
So I would think that the meeting tomorrow just needs to be, um, any of the staff at, at KMS that are directly involved with this, our team from the district office, as well as, um, I, I know that we're gonna have a few members of the school committee who are, who are also parents at the, the middle school, let's do that, and then we'll put a, a letter out. So our goal is to get a letter out tomorrow, but we need to have the, the first conversation. In that letter, we will talk about having a, a seventh grade parent meeting as well.
Can I ask, um, one follow-up question? A question that's posed on the, um. Parent asks, can parents donate to the KMS parent for the child participation, and then the PTO donate that money to the district? There must be a creative solution, maybe students themselves.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what we just said, yeah.
No, there is an answer to that.
The answer is yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, Dr. McBride?
I'll go to Sheila, and then, um. So, yes, um, that is, it is the answer to go to the KMS PTO, however, we, we haven't set it all up yet, so I would definitely say yes, and, and drop it off at the office, um, at KMS, um, and then we can set everything, the financials up and all that.
I think that's okay, because it exists.
Exactly.
So if it exists, then we're good.
So, we, as a treasurer, I have to say that we do have to be careful, though, that these monies have to be earmarked, if it is a donation.
Right, so what we're doing.
For Nature's Classroom, we have to have it earmarked.
Right.
For Nature's Classroom, so that it can't be used for.
Right, yes. So in the KMS, uh, we're gonna do it like we did the Coldanders Field, I don't know if anybody remembers that, we did a separate, um, line item through the bank and everything, that it actually could only be earmarked to that specific, um, category, and that, it had it, it had its own fund in the event that people would come back and need the mon-, something would happen. So it's gonna have its own fund, we just literally just, Amy just, we all just decided about this, like, what, last weekend? Like, so we're, we're working on it right now.
I just didn't want people coming to KMS tomorrow with suitcases full of cash, and dropping it off, uh. We would advise not to bring your suitcase full of cash.
Yeah, so that's kind of.
Because it doesn't need to be earmarked.
That's kind of what we're, we're concerned with right now, as we're just talking about it, because we're in the process of getting it all set up, so.
So I think, I would, I will just say, thank you, and I think that Raquel and Dr. Brace, maybe you guys could work on that too, in case people do come by with suitcases full of cash tomorrow, we can have something set up in the office, so that people can have a place to.
Alright, so let me just, let me just direct, right? So, because I see Dr. Burns, and I see Ms. Borges in the, um, audience. So if people come with cash tomorrow, alright?
I don't think it's cash.
I would, literally, I would ask that they take the cash back, alright? We want checks.
We want checks.
Alright? We want checks, bring us checks, don't bring us cash.
And write Nature's memo in the, uh, Nature's Classroom in the memo.
Exactly.
Mrs. McBride?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying this to my alibi, but some of us here at the table have donated so that children could go to Nature's Classroom, and the check was written to Nature's Classroom. It was not written to the, the district or, um, the school, it was written directly to Nature's Classroom. So, um, and I can tell you, I know that. So I think that that's a way to make it a clear, concise donation, that doesn't allow you to put the money anyplace but Nature's Classroom.
So.
Right?
One thing I would say that.
I don't know who they want the checks made out to.
So, exactly, so let me, let me say this.
Dr. Brace?
So by to, by tomorrow, we will send out two letters. There will be a general letter to the entire district about what we're doing with field trips. There will also be a specific, a targeted letter to all seventh grade parents at KMS concerning Nature's Classroom. So we'll have that by tomorrow afternoon, based on the meeting that we had. It will have the particulars about how much we need to raise, what the go-no-go date uh, will be, um, and a, a follow-up parent meeting. Because I think the idea of a follow-up parent meeting for any parents interested, um, in coming and, and working with this, I think is huge.
Uh, Mr. Bendon, sorry. Try to avoid your.
Yeah, I just wanted to say to Amy's point about having a sixth grader, that as soon as this is all straightened out, you need to get to work as sixth grade parents for nature.
Understood.
That's, that's all, I'm, I'm not saying you, Amy, I'm just saying in general, sixth grade, so.
I can get all that.
So as we finish with this seventh grade class, we need to be forward-thinking, as you say, Dr. McBride, and approach the sixth grade class after Christmas, you say, this is what we need to do.
Oh, I'll be, I'll be, I'll, I'll tell what's next.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Just, just FYI for that, because the kids already talked about it.
Okay, I just wanted to say.
Yeah.
That, don't forget the nature's year.
Okay, Mr. Bendon, thank you. I'm, get right in there.
Thank you.
Hey, it's, it's all good. I'm actually gonna piggyback on a comment you made. Uh, I've had two children go through the process, I've been, every time each one of them went through, I sponsored a couple of children. With everything that's been said, which all makes sense, we, we've gotta make sure that we're doing by right by our students that can't afford it, uh, the parents, uh, we still want the event to happen, because it's, it's a great learning, uh, environment, and I get all that, but having said that, I do wish to sponsor a student this year. So, what is that number? No, no, I got it, but what I'm saying is, if, if somebody does wanna sponsor a student, and I get that you don't wanna publicize to the parent, but to a community member that wants to come in and sponsor.
Make a donation.
Yeah, and, no, I'm saying, what, what is that, I wanna sponsor a child, what's that number? And I wanna be able to do that, and quite frankly, when you campaign, going outside the realm of parents and, and students, you, you should at least be able to do that, even though I understand, you know, legality and everything, can you do that?
You, you can, you can be, uh, we're, we're collecting donations, um, if anybody in the public wants to make a donation, it's gonna be approximately three hundred and twenty-five dollars per child, make any amount of that donation, and we'll be more than happy to accept it.
But I wanna, wanna be clear, if I come in.
Donation.
I cannot say, I wanna donate three hundred and twenty-five dollars for John.
No, you cannot.
You cannot sponsor a child by name.
Right, just, you are putting enough money in to know that one more child can go. We sponsor children, you don't need.
All right, Amy? We can like write up on the program, so we can go to businesses, I'm sure it'll be part of the fundraising, but like, a nice concise thing that maybe the teachers go to Nature's Classroom, and explain a better show, like, what they're actually donating towards.
Yeah, I, I think these are all the great questions, and I think maybe these could be fleshed out a bit in between now and when the letters go out, so that it's clear what, you know, who people donate to, what we can say in terms of amount of donations, sponsoring a child, etc. So, Mr. Karol, you have anything?
Yeah, but, but there could be a parent out there who says, I'm sending you a check of six hundred and fifty dollars, this is my child, and any kid who can't afford it, can they do that?
Yes.
Well, you don't, there, there's only a market to certain check.
However, if at the end of the day, we don't have enough money, and we still need money for fifty more kids, you're not gonna be able to have that trip.
You have to raise the total.
Like, what, how do you, again, how do we know that the hundred-and-some kids who aren't going, the, we need to know that it's a reason other than I can't afford it? That's the problem. And you have a low number right now.
Absolutely.
Mr. Ramos?
So, this maybe isn't specific to Nature's Classroom right now, but it's related because of the disparity between those who have registered and those who have not registered. Part of the issue that we're dealing with is making sure that we have enough money to pay for everybody that is going to go on the trip. And one of the things that we're struggling with right now is making the distinction between those who have not, among those who have not registered, between those who are, have not registered, because they're not interested, and those who have not registered, who, because perhaps they cannot afford it. Is it permissible, uh, when planning a field trip, to say, it's open to everybody, if you wanna go, uh, we need to know one way or the other, whether or not you're going to go by such and such a date? So that we get a final number, and then we can then gear our fundraising goals towards that actual number. Because right now, one of the challenges with Nature's Classroom is, I think the ninety thousand dollars is if everybody went, right? And, I mean, and because of the way the time crunch is working out right now, and because we put the, uh, lack of clarity around the reasons for the, for the non-registered students, we can't risk not raising enough for everybody. So, you know, I guess if we could say, even in this context, perhaps, let us know by October first, if you wanna go, and then we can adjust what the final fundraising will be.
And then if a parent says to you, what's the cost, do you say nothing?
Yeah.
Now, even with that, I think the only caveat I would have is seventy students not going, I think we're gonna, we have to build in something that takes another run of the parents, just to make sure that they are not, uh, failing to send their, allow their student to participate solely for, uh, a financial reason, right? We just don't, we, we wanna, we, I think we need to have it documented, that it's not for financial reasons why the student will not participate.
Okay.
Yes, now, I just have a question, um, I wasn't certain when the registration deadline was, if that had happened earlier on, if it was still open, and if then you prepared that, if there were going to be two hundred children going, do they have the means to handle all that? I didn't know if we were past that, my honor.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, they could be. So, no, so now, well, two hundred and fifty kids show up.
Yeah, so I, I think the question is whether or not they know if, how many students are gonna show up. And so Tammy, when we've registered, did we register, we registered for the entire seventh grade class, right?
Right, that's right.
Right, so we always set as an initial number, everybody that you think we're gonna have in the seventh grade. And then by the time we make that final payment, we're able to say, we gave, you know, we asked you to give us slots for two hundred and fifty, but we now only have two hundred and thirty that are showing up, and so here's the, the final payment. That's pretty standard for field trips.
Mr. Karol?
How many years have we been doing this? And each year, approximately, how many percentage rates, kids did not go?
I don't have any.
I mean, like, twenty-five percent, one in four?
I argue that.
I mean, because the, the truth of that is, we don't, but there could be fifty kids who really don't go.
So I think graduating class nineteen ninety-seven was the first class for nature's classroom. But it used to only be like the.
The looping.
The looping.
It wasn't the entire seventh grade.
No, that's okay, I, I know the.
It was only, um, one teams that went on Nature's Classroom, and then we, um, as a school committee, we decided that it was important for all seventh graders to go, so we said it's all or nothing. But we weren't faced with the question that we're faced with now. So that's how it's worked over the years.
Anyone else, any questions or comments? Okay, yeah, so I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn, I think everyone.
Motion to adjourn, actually, I could.
All in favor?
Aye.
All of those? Thank you, thank you everyone for your contributions, every conversation.